Stand and swim, my church changed to the fire of United States of America and to the one which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Most received file the agenda.
Some move.
Discussion on favor?
Aye.
Most received file the minutes of our regular meeting of February 27th, 2020, and our recess meeting of February 28th, 2020.
Second.
Any discussion on paper?
Aye.
Hearings and reports.
I'd just like to welcome everybody today. We have a full house and a lot on the agenda. I want to make, I want to recognize our sixth grade student council from Ashland Middle School. I know a lot of these young kids right here and I'm really, really proud of them to see them today. I just want to make mention, all of you know this is in the news, our Tom Caster 33-0, I mean, and state bound, region champions. And I'm so proud of each of those kids and their coaches. The tot lot, the first phase is finished. The second phase will be finished in a couple of weeks. And we're starting, we're thinking about phase three very, very soon to finish up that project. And I've been over there several times. And I want to thank finance, engineering, and Parks and Rec for their hard work on this. Century Garden, it will, there'll be a volunteer day for the Century Garden this Saturday at 8:00 a.m. If anybody would like to go over there and volunteer, I'll meet you over there. And then last but not least, repair fair is coming up. And if you have an application you'd like to submit, April 6th is the application. This is one of our great events during the year to help those that need help in our community with some of their product, some of their things, projects on their homes. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you Commissioner for all those, those thoughts. I did get a report from one of the park maintenance men that said he saw you shove a kid off a swing so you get it.
[laughing]
So I hope that's not going to be a normal activity for you.
He took too long.
Just kidding. They have to put a timer on those swings.
Put a timer.
Anyone else?
I don't have anything. Thank you.
But let me interject here and thank you for recognizing the student council and Rebecca Williams who I hired and Corey Brown's with her today. And how y'all doing without me? It's been tough, ain't it?
[laughing]
Well, I miss all of you. Trust me, I do miss you. Do you have your officers here that you might want to introduce Rebecca?
Well, actually, our three classes have officers or officers or...
They're just part of the whole, the whole unit. Well, we appreciate them being here. And I hope you stay well. You're not out and about in the group and all that. We're probably one of the last domains of still meeting as a group down here. It may not be that way in next meeting. Who knows? But try to follow all the, all the directions. I know your teachers have, have been talking to you a lot. Student council members, you're, you're elected by your classmates. And so you've got to be leaders. So please, as you're just walking through the halls or cafeteria, whatever the case may be, try to make sure everybody is following, washing their hands. And if you're used to shaking hands or just touching each other, you do it with your elbow. You know all that stuff already. I guess what I want to emphasize is you're the leaders in that school, certainly in that, that sixth grade class. So you've got to be an example. And let's try to keep everybody healthy. Y'all out of school next week Rebecca already? Not yet? Well, you know, we're glad you're here. And if you want to get up and leave, go back to class now. Oh, you don't? You're just going to stay here?
[laughing]
Amazing. How about that?
Mayor, I'd be remiss not to mention too, that my niece, the next generation of Perkinses, has been elected as a public officer here. And her name is Elizabeth Perkins. She's hiding, I think, now under the chair. But I did want to mention her today.
Where are you?
Raise your hand.
Where are you?
There she is. She wasn't hiding.
The one has a real red face right there.
Oh, yeah.
Yes. You have anybody you needed to...
Is Ben Pritchard here? Ben, can you stand up?
He's very embarrassed about this, I can tell.
Put your hands above your head. Shake them around. Okay. Your dad asked me to embarrass you. I think that did it.
[laughing]
And you match her color red on your face now too.
He's like, well done.
Thanks Ben. You can sit down.
Good job.
And really for them, and you know, we're very proud of them. Thanks Rebecca and Corey for, for bringing them today as part of their governmental activities. But I'm sure you've seen some things in the paper. Our, our Ashland Middle Schools has been winning all kinds of things over the past few years since we moved the sixth grade overs when they really got strong, I think. What do you think Rebecca? That did it? Just so you know, because you need to play a part in this, they're, they're proceeding the nationals for the Samsung Solve for Tomorrow competition. Their project, I hope you read about this in the paper. Paper did a great job. Leave No Child Behind is an innovative way to assist students with mobility issues in case of fire in schools. It also reduces the time firefighters are in a burning building. The team needs community support by visiting samsung.com. It's really simple, real simple to do. Or the Samsung Solve for Tomorrow Facebook page. Voting for Ashland Middle Schools project. That's the big deal. You look for the video with the fire truck. You may vote once per day, keep that in mind, between now and March 31. So that's, you go to samsung.com or Samsung Solve for Tomorrow Facebook page and you're voting for Ashland Middle School. Okay? The school with the most votes will be announced the community choice winner and is awarded $10,000 to be used for technology at the middle school. Two years ago, Ashland Middle School won this award, bought new computers for the computer lab. Every vote counts. Okay? So everybody try to remember that and tell your friends and neighbors to cast that vote for Ashland Middle School. Thank you all for being here. We're very proud of you. Mr. Manager?
I'd like to start off. Mark, if you could come up front, Mr. Hall. Had a situation occur recently down at the wastewater treatment plant that staff responded very well to and wanted to recognize some of the folks that made a potentially bad situation a good one.
And you are?
Mark Hall, Director of Utilities.
Okay, we know that. I just want, he's our Director of Utilities. He's relatively new on the job. And since he's been on the job, we're embarking on a $50 million or more total revamp of actually water and, and our sewer treatment plant. And it's going to take several years to do all that. But he's just been doing a great job for us.
Thank you. I'm, I'm glad there's not a whole lot going on since I...
Keeps you a little busy though, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Not, not a dull day?
Yes.
Okay.
Mayor and Commissioners, what, what I actually wanted to speak about was I wanted to bring to your attention something that, a situation that happened at wastewater plant. Starting on February 12th, we have trucks coming in routinely at the wastewater plant that bring hauled waste in. One of these trucks was coming through the facility and actually broke through an electrical manhole lid. Seemed to cause minimal damage at that time. The truck just actually was able to just drive off with, with no damage. Our guys got together, figured out what they needed to do, got the parts, fixed the manhole lid. And we assumed that was basically the only thing we had going on. What we found out was sometime down the road, we started having some electrical issues at the, at the wastewater plant. Up to eventually a significant portion of the wastewater plant lost power. Where we were operating at that point on auxiliary power through our permanent generators that are, that are on site there. And also, we had to bring a mobile generator in there to continue to maintain the treatment facility. And while, while all this was going on, we continued to put out quality effluent. There was never an issue with any compliance issues or anything like that. But obviously, we couldn't continue to run on generator power forever. It was important that we get the power restored as soon as possible. And with the help of a lot of these, all of these men that you see in here right now, we were able to do that. And I wanted to just recognize them by mentioning their names here. Because they, one thing about this is there's only a couple of guys in here that I brought in here that are at the wastewater plant. The rest of these men work in other divisions. And it's, says a lot about them when something extraordinary happens in the city, that they're able to respond in an extraordinary, extraordinary manner and help us restore, fix an issue like this.
Terrific. And so who are these?
Starting with, I wanted to mention Dave Krieger. He's a maintenance, if you guys don't care, just raise your hand or whatever. He's our maintenance supervisor at the wastewater plant. He would have been the lead on, on this whole situation was going on. He was the one that was putting in a lot of the sweat equity and a lot of the head scratching.
Did, when they, when they hit that manhole, did, did the truck get caught there or anything?
I think it got hung up for a short period of time, isn't it?
It does.
And just pull out.
I thought maybe he just lifted it up.
He probably, probably tried actually. So. But I mean, this is something they've driven, vehicles have been driving through there since that plant is in existence, you know. So this is just something that happened. Also wanted to mention Larry McKee. He's also an operator at the wastewater plant. Helped Dave was kind of his right-hand man on this. And then all these other gentlemen from wastewater collection, I have Zach Reed, Darren Walker, Stanley Harris, Braden Beavens, Justin Royster, and Bruce Worthington, who's not, he's not here today.
Well, let me say, you know, for the people visiting today too though, there's so many of our employees, we don't get to see much. Rarely, unless we go visit the sites, you know, and we sometimes may not know them very well. I think all of us, when we're out like that, we try to acknowledge them, how much they mean to the total operation of our city. Our utility department, you know, with our waterworks and our, and our sewage system up there, the wastewater plant. They're unbelievable staff. We're trying to upgrade everything to make their job a little bit easier. And, and the main reason, of course, is to continue to have the, the very best drinking water possible. And that the very, the, the very highest quality effluent that goes on into the river from our treatment plant, sewer treatment plant, is appropriate, not only just federal, but above federal guidelines. And all these guys here today, that we don't get to thank them a lot. But we, on behalf of all of us and certainly our citizens, we thank you for that extra effort. Just what you're talking about happened, it would, would normally cost us a greater expense by maybe calling a contractor out to do this and do that. And so we, we do appreciate everybody's effort. And I appreciate the fact, Mark, that you didn't want to let it go unnoticed and that you would bring them in. So guys, you know, behalf of the, the people up here and as citizens, we thank you for those extra efforts. Appreciate continued, continued safety up on the job and, and doing the right thing for our citizens.
I still have a couple of other names, Mayor, that I'd like to mention.
Let them go.
From Water Distribution, it was Brandon Carpenter, David Jones, and Jeff Wellman. And Streets, we had Kelly Workman and, and Dave Travis. And all these guys pitched in in some way, shape, form, or fashion to help this get back, back operating again.
Well, a lot of these, all these guys, I recognize name and face because they're always out when we have water problems that I mentioned. The last meeting, the meeting before and everybody got upset. But we've gone through a winter with any major break. And spring is next Wednesday?
Yes.
First day of spring. Now, I know I've...
Two meetings in a row.
I've lived long enough to see, to see snow on Easter. You know, I can remember that. And Easter is pretty early this year. But, and we may still have something. But, but I'm telling you that we have a, we have a very aggressive ongoing program of water line replacement. And, and these crews are doing that too. You know, the, the big jobs we contract. But we're going to overturn, we're spending a million dollars a year we've committed to, to replace water lines that we know have been the biggest trouble spots. And a lot of these guys I know, they're the ones out there. And you name it, the weather and last winter in particular. But this year at least, you know, I just, sometimes you need to say it again to make our citizens remember. Because like last year and a couple winters before, all of us, our phones were busy every day. And, and people concerned and upset. And we understood it. And, and these guys are the ones that got the water back on as quick as possible and kept the inconvenience as low as possible. So when you do have a winter where it doesn't happen to us, yeah, I'm going to keep saying it till it happens.
Mayor, stop, stop saying it. I just got to notice that there's a flash flood now for the water camp.
Literally just popped up, flash flood warning.
But we thank all of you guys for the work you do, literally in the trenches.
Amen.
Thank you guys. I appreciate everything you did. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Mark. Thanks Cruz.
Now, I like the school kids who, I can't order them back to school anymore, anything like that. But Mark, you may, yeah, if they want to get back on the job, so we can still drink and flush safely. Thanks guys.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Thanks a lot. Just keep up the great job you're doing.
Mayor, next topic is the, we've got a presentation on stormwater murals from Public Information Officer Michelle Grubbin, also Kevin Hill, one of our stellar engineer techs, going to introduce a program that we started moving forward with that we want to highlight to the public.
Good afternoon. Ashland is required annually to submit an annual stormwater permit, part of the phase two requirement. We're required to reach out to the public for public involvement and education. In the past, we, we've done that. But this year, we kind of wanted to step that up and try to get the public to realize how important it is to reduce the amount of illicit materials that go into our storm drains. Not only to keep our water clean, but to also reduce the backup potential which causes street flooding, that sort of thing.
And Kevin, just to interrupt a minute. So the kids pay close attention to this and, and the sponsors that are here today. You're going to be involved in this. So this is something you can relate to. And you're going to know more about it today than any other kids in the school district. But this is going to be a school-city partnership. Okay? So pay close attention. Thanks.
So we did, we had an in-house meeting and discussed how to go forth and how, you know, how best to implement this. And we concluded that involving the students in, in schools would be a good way to go. So Michelle Grubbin and I met with Superintendent Howard yesterday, along with his six elementary school principals, and introduced our concept and our idea. And they were very enthusiastic and definitely wanted to participate. We're going to work with them. We're going, we're going to pick out two storm drains within walking distance of each elementary school. We're working with Chief Kelly on the safety aspect of it. And along with Jack and Streets. So Michelle actually has, she's going to just explain how we're going to implement it and what our plan is.
Thank you Kevin.
You guys have the packet in front of you. So like he mentioned, it'll be an educational value, not only for the students, but as the kids go home and talk about it with their families, as well as it'll become public art pieces that as you walk by, will have those messages going out as well. And so you can see, there's a couple of examples of some storm drains of how they look before there would be anything to them. And I think the top one is by Crab Elementary. And that bottom one is over by Hager. And then here's some of the locations that we've looked at as possibilities. And then you start to see when they begin to come to life. And so they share messages about how everything that goes down the storm drain eventually leads to either our rivers, our lakes, and the importance of keeping that pollution out of there. So these are some of the design guidelines that we've set down, you know, having original artwork, demonstrating the educational value with that theme of stormwater pollution or environmental protection, water quality improvement. To be creative, yet aesthetically pleasing, all the proposed artwork, they have a template that they'll be able to design and draw within. Each art piece, the, the schools kind of talked about running a contest among their students as who would end up winning to, to get to do that mural by their school. And all artwork will be, you know, looked over and approved before it's done. They're family friendly. And at the end of this, the goal then is to develop a brochure or publication that we can put out that would have a map that would mark with pinpoints where they're all located, as well as a little bio of each of those murals. So people could go, drive around and see each of the artwork pieces. And then as they begin to fade in about four to five years, we'll paint over and get a new generation of kids that get, get involved and have a chance to leave their mark.
Terrific.
It's great.
A couple of other things, Mayor and Commissioners, not, this is a start point with the school system. The intention is to put this information after it gets fine tuned, put it online. So if an individual or another organization wants to volunteer to do one, they identify it. We make sure there's no reason why we couldn't do a particular location. They go through the application process, it gets approved. So hopefully this will be like an ink spot and spread throughout the city. And just something very interesting. We've seen in other communities, it's really very popular.
Since the middle school is here, are we, we, do we have plans on involving the middle school and the high school as well?
Well, Mr. Howard did say that he was going to reach out to the junior high and the high school.
Okay, good.
Our original thought was to involve the high school art club, if there is one, or at least the art class, so that they could sort of, each, like a student in the high school could chaperone a particular grade school, elementary school. So, yeah.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay.
Great project. Great project.
Appreciate it.
Mayor, last thing I had officially was to introduce Ashland Boyd County Health Department. Matt Anderson is here. Yeah, Matt Anderson is here to give a short presentation, given the COVID-19 pandemic that's been identified. We've been working closely with the Health Department. Maria Hardy and their entire team has, has just been fantastic. Thought it was a great opportunity for, for Matt to present information and to ask any questions. We're supporting their efforts to lead in this community as they've been coordinating with state and the federal level on getting the right message out and balancing all that. So with that, Mr. Anderson.
Matt, y'all feel pretty comfortable with all these Oakview kids here?
Yeah, I do. Yes. Yes.
Matt was a former teacher there and, and I might say a star teacher.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Did a great job.
Thank you. Thanks for having us here today. I wanted to just give you guys a latest update. Just to know, like Mr. Gracie said, that we've been in constant contact with the city, county, school system, emergency management, pretty much all day long for the last week and a half or so. So I've got a PowerPoint that I created. Going to walk you through a few things. I'm not going to read it word for word. I don't like when people do that. I'll just kind of talk about it a little bit. Got some specific stuff that we're going to get into. Kentucky info, where to find the correct and right information, community guidelines that everybody in the community kind of need to follow, pay attention to, who is at greatest risk and when to seek care. Those are kind of the main things that we kind of felt like that people needed to know. So I'll, I'll click through here and some of the stuff we'll go over and some of it, I'll read from my notes here. We have 64 individual tests that have been performed on Kentucky residents. Eight of those have been confirmed positive, five in Harrison County, two in Fayette, and one in Jefferson. Four of those people are isolated in hospitals, four of them are isolated at home. All are stable and improving. That's straight from the governor. And I think one of them has maybe been released or was very close to being released. One person in Boyd County was tested negative. And we have no positive cases in Boyd County or any county that neighbors us. So that's good news for us.
Hey, Matt, can I interject?
Sure.
Just because I think all of us have been watching. I mean, you all are going to be busy every day.
Correct.
For a long time.
Right.
As well are the news media.
Yep.
But they, they keep saying that we don't have enough test material.
Right.
So in little old Ashland Boyd County.
Right.
How many, how many test instruments do we have?
I do not know. I do know that if somebody does feel, and I'll get into this here in a minute, more specifically, if they feel more sick than normal, they should call first. If they're going to go to King's Daughters, or their doctor, or urgent care, or us, they should call. Because we have guidance from the CDC that we're following that will kind of screen their symptoms. Because like, we don't, we don't want people overwhelming the ER because they're coughing, because it's allergy season. So I don't have a number on, on how those tests are. But I know that, that we do have the availability in Boyd County to test. But people need to call their provider first to even know whether they really should come in or not. Where to find up-to-date information? The main place will be the Kentucky Cabinet for Health and Family Services website, which is kycovid19.ky.gov. That's the spot to go to. You'll see a green box on the side that's updated all the time with how many tests have been performed, how many are positive. And it'll give you the timestamp of when, you know, how, how up-to-date that information is. The Governor Andy Beshear's Facebook page, he does a day, twice daily update, 9:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. will tell you everything that's going on. There is a number to call. So if you feel like you could have symptoms, want an update on availability of tests, it's 1-800-722-5725. Also, our website, abchdkentucky.com. We have several different places on our website that you can find that information. On the homepage, there's a red box that says breaking news coronavirus update. You can click there. We have a scrolling banner. You can click through that and find an update. And we have stuff that I update specifically throughout the day as new information arrives. So people can check that. Also, our Facebook page, I will link important information. And the CDC has a website as well. So those are all places that people can check rather than calling their doctor. If they just want kind of general information, that stuff is updated all day long. This is community guidance. This is probably anybody that's, that's watching at home, really stuff that you need to pay attention to. Just like you learn in kindergarten, wash your hands. I mean, you would be amazed, maybe not amazed. When I went to the games at Morehead, in the bathroom washing my hands with my son, the people that just walked out. And I was just shaking my head. So wash your hands. When you go to a restaurant before you eat, I wash my hands before I eat at home. So just take care of yourself. Simple, regular, proper hygiene. Also, on our website, you can visit that web, that web address that's linked there. There's appropriate hand washing, a video from the CDC that you can watch, how to get your household ready. So ways that you can clean at home, and approved cleaner lists. The, the list is very, very long. It's from the CDC. You can find all the cleaners that will, will do the trick. And also, when you clean a surface, make sure it stays wet for a while. Some people will clean a surface, go right back over with a paper towel and wipe it dry. Those chemicals need a little bit of time to work. So let it sit for a while before you go back and dry that off. All right. We will go next to people who are at greatest risk. And also to back up, hand sanitizer is a good option. If you aren't able to wash your hands, I know that you see on the media that, you know, sanitizer is sold out everywhere, which is great. But if you can't wash your hands, hand sanitizer is fine. Hand sanitizer should not just be, you're going to squirt it in your hand before you go to Gaddyland. Don't do that. Go to the bathroom, wash your hands. Maintain social distancing is also something that is important. They recommend six feet. So I know it's something that in places like this is kind of hard to accommodate. But I know in our clinic, for example, we measured out and we spaced all of our seats six feet apart. So it might be someplace that, whether it's... spaced all of our seats six feet apart, so it might be someplace that, whether it's restaurants or at school or wherever, people need to, for the next little bit, just kind of keep in the back of your mind. Also, you know, heavily used surfaces, rails, school buses, stuff like that, those things need to be cleaned. Really just common sense things. Those at greatest risk are people who have come in close contact with someone who obviously has a case. Okay, that's, that's another common sense thing. So if you have been close to someone who has a positive case, you would be at greatest risk. Or healthcare workers or anyone who has traveled out of our country to another country that has been affected. So those are the people who are at greatest risk for testing positive. Also, the guidance for people who are over 60 years old, who have heart issues, kidney issues, any kind of, you know, detrimental health situation already going on, those people should avoid large crowds, you know, for the next little bit, which is why you can see the SEC tournament was canceled today and all of these things that are going on that just came across a little bit ago. So you can see they're taking it pretty seriously. So if you do have developed a fever or respiratory symptoms and believe you've had exposure to a known traveled area or within your community, it is important that you call first and find out what your doctor would like you to do. All right, this is important, when to seek care, because I think, you know, there's a lot of panic that can hit and some people will just show up anywhere to have somebody tell them that they're okay, and that just kind of creates a secondary problem. So they, see, this is from Kentucky, from the Kentucky website that I mentioned earlier. Stay home if you are worried but well. So if you're just worried about this, but you feel fine, stay home. There's no reason to overreact to this. Call for advice, like I mentioned earlier. If you are ill but would not have sought care if not for this outbreak, then they're recommending that you call and, and take your doctor's advice. You need to seek care if you feel you are sick or have an emergency. The hospital staff will advise you whether to come in or not. So those are just some simple, general tips, stuff that's all available online for you to find out 24 hours a day.
You know, they, they basically say that on national TV constantly, just call your doctor.
Yeah.
Y'all ever try to call your doctor? I mean, come on. And I know, I mean, I, I know my doctors really well, really good friends, but I'm not going to give them on the phone.
Correct.
I can text them, I do text them about stuff, but, but I'm just saying the general population, you're not going to talk to a doctor, you may not even get to talk to a nurse.
Correct, that's true.
But that's a, that's just a cog there that you have to deal with.
Right.
I guess, but I think if you follow the first two, maybe, maybe it'll help things too.
Yeah, there's, you know, there's a lot of probably misinformation that I've seen from people all over things about, oh, there was this many people tested in Boyd County, it's simply not true. So if you have questions, you can call our office, it's 329-9444, or you'll call our clinic at 3247181, and we have the correct, right information and just take care of yourself and stay clean and.
We appreciate it, Matt.
Did they cancel the Sweet 16?
No, not as of 15 minutes ago.
Yeah, decision's going to be made maybe today though.
Okay.
Mayor Commissioners, a couple of things and also for the public, we are, we've implemented procedures in accordance with the Ashland Boyd County Health Department. We're also going to do some periodic deep cleanings, which may mean as customers come in, it may, we may be a little bit slower to react on things as, as we continue to do this. Our crews are focused on the guidance that the, the Health Department has given us. Also, I think our policy support, flexibility for our workers, if it does come to a situation where they have to stay home with what we have with both our sick leave and normal leave, and also looking at purchasing some small cost items, sneeze guards where there's customer, direct customer service and some things like that, that frankly can be reused in the future in flu season or something along those lines.
What's a sneeze guard look like?
Depends on which one you buy.
I mean, you're going to use those terms on me, I want to know what they look like.
Is that something we're putting over our desk here, a sneeze guard?
Oh, no, is it, do our employees wear them?
No, it's, it can be something that you set up.
Just a, just a portable one, you sit up there?
Like a, like a, at a buffet, right?
Right.
The little plastic thing that goes over the buffet.
Mayor, thanks, that's, that's all I had.
Okay, thanks, Mayor. This part of our meeting is public participation. If there's an item on the agenda you'd like to bring before the commission or not on the agenda, we'd actually give your name and address and limit your comments to five minutes or less.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm Whitney Lowe with Ashland in Motion, and I am here to talk about First Friday. Of course, it's spring, it certainly feels like it outside today.
Is everybody here okay? Everybody here, okay?
Pull that microphone to you.
Yeah, that may help, yeah.
Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay. With spring coming up, we're preparing for First Friday, the Ashland in Motion Board is. And while it's not on the agenda today, the city manager and myself thought it would be wise to just kind of go over a few of the changes that the Ashland in Motion Board has proposed. And I'm actually going to give Ms. Maddox, I have a map here of the proposed layout and just some information about some of the changes and how that affects businesses coming up this year.
Whitney, that starts in this month, or April, doesn't it?
Starts in April, so April 3rd is the beginning. Mm-hmm. April 3rd, it runs through April through October with the exception of July. We take off July due to summer motion, it usually falls on the same date. So essentially this year, our, our goal as a board is to return ownership to downtown businesses, to simplify the logistics of the event and alleviate a lot of the stress that we've put on the Street Department in the past in terms of setup and more importantly, just provide more opportunity for businesses. And so in some of the ways that we're doing that and that are highlighted in, in the paper that I've given you, is we've eliminated a lot of the outdoor vendor opportunities, a lot of the outside sales, and are really just focusing on our brick and mortar businesses and creating partnerships with those businesses to carry out some of the incentives that we've had in the past, such as the First Friday stage, which will be placed at Get Fiddle Custom Shop this year. They have a wonderful stage inside and it's, it'll be great to really use the assets that they have to promote our local talent. And then we're also working with Highlands Museum and Discovery Center as the allocated children's activities point. And not only will we be offering free admission to the Highlands Museum during First Fridays from 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM, but they're also working with their staff to coordinate several different events so that they have some untypical activities, things that normally wouldn't be going on there to make the day extra special. Lastly, if you look at the map, one of the other changes, and probably one of the most important ones is to what I need to touch base on today, is we are doing away with the Beer Garden that we've had on 15th Street, which is huge alleviation, I think, to the Streets Department and to this organization. And it also provides more opportunity as we have the opportunity now to work with other businesses who have a ABC license, catering license. So there's several of those businesses here in Ashland that have already acquired that license and, you know, are using their funds to pay for that. And examples of that are Blazers Restaurant and 3J Group, which also falls under the umbrella of the Winchester, and Kentucky Hall of Fame Cafe. And those businesses have expressed interest over the years, in the past three years that we've been hosting beer sales at First Friday, the opportunity to be involved. So this allows for those businesses to finally be a part of that event. It allows for them to use the resources and the licenses that they do have and have a monthly opportunity to create some revenue. What we would like to do, and we'd like for the commission and mayor to consider coming up on the next agenda, is we would like for folks who attend the event to be able to walk freely within the proposed event area, which is Winchester Avenue from 14th Street to 17th Street, with an open container. Of course, we want to work closely with APD and all city departments to ensure safety and security. And so that's one of the reasons why I'm here today. Some of the things we have talked about that we can put in place to ensure safety and to prohibit outside beverages is, Ashland in Motion is prepared to buy, to provide to those ABC vendors disposable cups that are imprinted, you know, with First Friday's logo or something to that nature, so that they can't be duplicated by an outside guest, and then also provide 21 and over wristbands. Also, this year's event, the time has been shortened from 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM, which we also believe with the 8:00 PM ending time, that that would also kind of prohibit any kind of behaviors that would be frowned upon in relation to the consumption of alcohol. So with that said, I'm open to any questions that you may have. I know that this also, working with APD, while it does alleviate some of the stress on, on roads, it will possibly increase foot patrol, and so, you know, we have to think of that in, in terms of this fiscal year and why Ashland in Motion has been granted in terms of the grants and contributions.
So the museum is, is partnering on this?
Yes.
And will offer activities for the kids during that time?
They will, they will, they'll offer activities in addition to the children's zone that they already have and in addition to free admission, which is a huge incentive for the public during, during those First Friday hours, which is four to eight. Yep.
So I think like Whitney mentioned, there's, there's still a little bit more work to be done on some of the details of this. I think some of the ABC considerations will need to be ironed out. Also, as you mentioned, alluded to, the gifts and contributions was approved for some amount. I think roughly speaking, you're probably double the footprint of the officers that are out there because, because of the size. I think, I think it's all in the realm of the manageable, but those will have the details next week, or excuse me, at the next meeting, we'll, we'll put that on the agenda.
Well, we've done well with, with every, every event that we've tried to expand how we do them and how we offer them to get more people downtown. So I, I look forward to.
Just having been a part of the conversations on the board, one of the things that was really important to the Ashland in Motion Board was to sort of give this event back to downtown merchants, which is Ashland in Motion's purview, you know, it's, it's their mission. If you'll notice on this list, where we are moving, the main stage off the street, we are allowing local musicians to set up on different corners and at other businesses, should that business decide to have somebody there. So I think it'll be a neat event, I think it, where we're sort of streamlining the, where it's held instead of kind of offshoots, it'll work really well.
I appreciate that, I'm glad you're involved in it. I, I like, I like the part about trying to get businesses to stay open. Now, recognizing that there are a number of service industries downtown that, you know...
Well, and not to interrupt you, but we have talked about that and we've compared it to First Friday events, not just in Ashland, but all over the state, all over the nation. And we encourage those businesses to be open as well. We think that it's a good opportunity for them to host an open house of sorts, to, you know, just provide, you know, maybe some snacks or something, but more importantly, talk to people who come in about their services.
Yeah.
It's certainly, you know, it, we encourage them to kind of think out of the box, maybe have an acoustic musician in there or offer some sort of snack or something like that. But what we really want is to highlight the assets that we have downtown. So we really depend on those local businesses to be a part of that network, be part of the, the fiber of it.
Yeah, that's a major part of, I mean, we, we've known that for years here. I mean, we, I've had, you know, business forums and everything and the hotel and trying to get them to stay open longer, and that's when we had a lot of retail on Main Street. But, you know, obviously the heart of our retail is the arcade now, and I think, you know, as, as I see you're encouraging them to stay open those evenings when the traffic flows down there, you, you, you know, you may, you may not do a whole lot, but I know this, that as Roger Brooks said, cities, large and small, many like us across the country, you, you don't, you don't do a lot of sales in the morning, you know?
Right.
And he, he's pushed the, the stores to open at 10, open at 11, 11 to 7, when people get off work at 5 and people are coming downtown to, to eat or something, they say, oh, yeah, I've been wanting to go in that store, it's never open, and it's open in the evening. I think if our people give it a chance, it may take a little while, and I, and I think this, the other thing that we learned and, and I, I was never a proponent, neither was anybody I was up with here, we, we felt like you had to have a shop and then people were going to come downtown. And Brooks, I guess, is, his whole, you know, tenor on that was, you bring people downtown and then people are going to want to put shops in.
Right.
Now, and, and I'm not against that now, I'm thinking, let's give it a shot. So if you do things like this, this is another way to bring them downtown. If people will stay open that have retail.
Yeah.
They may end up getting regular customers that way.
Absolutely.
And, and as more stores come in, which there are going to be some, when Mr. Jevon's through there, I think he's going to end up maybe having a couple major places that will be kind of an anchor in the middle of downtown, as malls have anchors, I think, I think that G.C. Murphy Building is going to be an anchor. Everybody's going to be in, want to be an eyesight of that, you know? So if they'll stay open hours that people can conveniently come to their places, so this, this may be a good way with, with Ashland in Motion helping break that barrier.
Well, we hope so, and, and not to take much more of your time, but just to elaborate on that, this plan definitely evolves from Destination Ashland and that comprehensive plan that Mr. Brooks helped.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Put together. So, you know, we're just, we're trying to incentivize businesses to stay open, offering to pay for their business license in 2021 if they do stay open for all six events, and help them realize that this synergy, if they're open, then their neighbor's going to be open and then their neighbor will be open. So it certainly creates synergy that will survive not only First Friday, but, you know, definitely as, as it becomes more successful and it will, it'll, you know, we'll see that happen every day, so.
Well, I think a further incentive might be when you're advertising First Friday, when you put something in the paper or whatever, poll some of your stores and list, list them in the ad, they'll be open tonight to 8.
Absolutely.
You know?
Yes.
And they'll get a free ad that way.
Mm-hmm.
So everybody, these are dreamers and they put their life savings, some of them, and, and they're, they're on a hope, a hope and a prayer sometimes, and I admire them for that.
Mm-hmm.
And so we need, we need to help them every way we can to be successful.
100%, yeah. And we think this is a, a good way to, to begin that, so we appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Whitney, I appreciate your work and the work of Ashland in Motion and their board, because you got to be flexible, and that means we have to be flexible and do what, what works.
Name and address?
I'm Gerald Thompson, I'm on Leywood Drive, and I, I feel motivated to say something from my expertise as a crisis response and, and planner type guy that I think supplements some of what we've heard from the, from the Health Department. Let me be clear, I am not a medical authority, I'm a crisis response and a planner type guy. What motivates me to jump up here is your question about testing. There's two, there's two sides of what we're dealing with right now, which is a huge problem. The one that has our immediate attention is to identify those people that are affected and get appropriate treatment, and, and just beyond that is to provide, try and barricade ourself or prevent infection from spreading. We have unfortunately a limited testing capacity, and this is something that deserves people's attention at all levels. What's going on is there's a set of protocols established for when to administer a test so that we're being economical with that resource and, and trying to use it effectively to identify people that are sick and get treatment to them. That's perfectly sensible. But to understand the threat here, we need generalized testing. And that needs a vastly ramped up capacity over what we're looking at right now. People are doing drive-up testing in Germany, the Koreans are testing 10,000 people a day. We've tested, I think it's something like 6,000 total, okay? That is, you know, if, if what you're interested in is treating the sick, okay, but it's not going to get you beyond this, okay? It's not going to get your arms around this. You need to understand infection rate, you need to understand mortality rate, you need to understand infected groups much more than you do now. Unfortunately, the only stopper in this affair, correct me if you think I'm wrong, but the only stopper here is to get a vaccine. And until then, you're dealing with mitigation and prophylaxis, okay? But you cannot know what your requirement is, you cannot design an effective action until you have knowledge of what this infection looks like across the population. And we really need to ramp up our capability there. That's beyond the Ashland City Commission, I recognize that. But I encourage you, make that need known to the state, to the federal. Call your congressman. We need a generalized testing capability and, and good citizens, when that, that testing capability will become available because that's, that's what we got to do. When that day comes, I encourage you all to go get tested. If you've got a sniffle, go get tested, because we need to understand this infection much, much better than we do now.
Sure.
So your question is well placed, and, and we shouldn't just push it off in the corner because we've got a set of protocols that tells us how to manage the capability we've got now. That's only dealing with treatment, treatment of the already sick. That's not where we want to be.
Yeah. You know, historically, vaccines have been developed based on a national or worldwide scare, you know? I mean, look how many years they worked on a polio vaccine and so many people were debilitated for years and years. And they finally got it and it was a miracle vaccine. They have developed different strains of flu vaccines over the past 30, 40 years. And this one, you know, is, I think most of us, certainly adults, are watching everything we can watch. And, you know, I watched the congressional hearing yesterday where they were dealing with actually the CDC and the WHO people. They can't say much more than me and you can say.
I'm very confident that we will do this. Okay?
Oh, I do too.
Technically, it's not that big a deal.
Yeah, but it's going to take a while.
But I am concerned that, I don't hear people squaring off and understanding that we have a failure here. Okay? And it needs to be addressed as a failure and get it corrected. It can be corrected.
Yeah. Thank you. Appreciate your comments.
Thanks, Gerald.
Anyone else? Appreciate you being here, especially your kids. Appreciate. You already had your lunch, didn't you, before you came?
We're probably starving like us.
Where are you going to take Rebecca? Where? Ah, that's okay. They're good. We won't be here much longer. Or you can go now. I'd be glad for y'all to leave now so you can get to lunch.
Yep.
Sure, I'm sure. Just take a second here to let you file out.
While they're filing out the...
Should've told me ahead of time.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, guys. Mark Maynard's reporting that attendance will be limited to family members and school officials.
Oh, wow.
Well, me and Matt Anderson are going to dress up like the cats.
Essential.
We're going to dress up like the mascots.
Thanks, Cory. Thanks for being here.
Have a hazmat suit on with a tomcat hat on.
Good to see you. Ohio's doing that. I'm sure all we're doing is mimicking the state of Ohio.
Best practices.
I'm no serious on anything. Okay, you understand, but I did coach as a teacher. I've been in schools. I've been...
Slept at quality in.
But like, when you say, what else I've been?
Nothing.
Oh. Before you're born. But like, the governor of Ohio set that up in Ohio already for their Ohio State Basketball Tournament, that families. Well, how about cousin? You know, brother-in-law, nephew. I mean, come on. What a bailiwick that's going to be, you know, dealing with it. Going to have to show lineage to get into the game. I mean, it's going to be, and you know, in Kentucky, for God's sakes, I mean, we're going, and, no, we're not all related either. But, I mean, think the NCAA. You know how many people like, were in Nashville? And last night, they went to the games, yesterday and last night, because I watched all of them. All right? Now, thank all these UK fans. We have more than anybody anywhere, I don't care where UK plays. And that's, that's nice to think about, but it's also, you wonder how they all get off work or they don't work or they scrape enough money to go to these games. But I would hate to be down there trying to block all these people with blue shirts on, trying to get in when they play first, tomorrow at 1:00. And I mean, it's going to be, I don't think NCAA said families. I think they said, they might have, but what I heard was just essential personnel to run the tournament and school officials, you know, stuff like that. That's going to be, I mean, it's amazing. I've never heard anything in my whole life. So it's a new thing. Ms. Thompson, what you touched on, it's kind of something we have never dealt with before at this level. So it'll be interesting to see how cool heads prevail.
Mayor, we have an update.
An update here.
Update?
The SEC conference has been canceled. The remainder of the games will not be played.
They're not even going to play?
That's what it says.
That's, that's down, you know, sports should not drive the world, but sports drives the world.
[laughing]
And my world sometimes, yes, sir.
I can just say one more thing. Here's, right now, this is upsetting. This is disturbing. It may actually be an overreaction.
Oh, hey, I'm with you.
The problem is, we don't have the ability to know.
Can't make that determination that everybody's going to be safe otherwise.
The truth is, if we do the things that we've been asked to do in the protocols, it may be that it never gets as bad as it would have been otherwise. And we'll never know. We'll never know if we overreacted or not because if we get a good result...
Amazing.
Can't prove a negative.
That's amazing. Okay. We seem kind of miniscule here in North Kentucky today, don't we? We don't make decisions like that. But we make big decisions. Okay. No old business. We took care of that at the recess meeting. Consent agenda.
A resolution of the City of Ashland, Kentucky, adopting, authorizing, and improving the course of action presented by the city manager on the items appearing on the consent agenda for the regular meeting of the Board of City Commissioners of March 12, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just want to mention for the public's consumption that we do have a bid on item one of 851,000 for paving for our streets department. So, and I think the city manager has mentioned that there'll be opportunities for the public to see what streets are scheduled to be paved on our social media and website.
Yeah, it's, thank you, commissioners. Posted online. The roads that have been paved in this fiscal year, the ones that are still to be paved. And then I call it below the line, those that we don't think we'll have funds for. Kevin is coordinating closely with Mountain. They expect to open up the asphalt plant here towards the end of the month. We believe we're at the, if not at the top, very near the top. They've got $600,000 right out of the gate to do. And then another $400,000, he's going to give that list to them very soon to execute. And then we still have the $500,000 of the grant that we got from the three-year, we can use it within three years, a grant that's going to be focused on Oakview Road primarily. Right, Kevin?
Oakview Road and Garden House Street, 3rd Street.
Thank you. So coordinating that with Columbia Gas and the work that they're finishing over there so we don't put down paving, they come back and tear it up. But again...
How's that coming along?
We can spend the, we can spend the money if we can get them here. And Kevin's doing an excellent job of trying to lock them down.
Oakview Road, hallelujah.
Come, the mayor's. Oh, gosh. Said that out loud.
I also have asked the city manager, once the paving program begins to, like our second meeting each month, provide us with the running list of the streets we've approved and what's been done. So we'll know monthly what's been done. So Kevin will, you'll be right in the line of fire to make sure the information comes to the manager and then to us. As regretful as it may be sometimes when you turn it in. But we understand, I talked to the manager earlier today, I can remember back in the 80s, our paving budget was $200,000. Of course, today's money is probably half a million anyway. But seriously, it wasn't very large. But we seem to do, we seem to keep up.
Yeah.
But, and you had, there were a bunch of state highway bidders back then. I mean, there were several. And locals didn't, actually, it was Ashland Asphalt, what it was called then. It was down here on E.B. Loman, Sr. And they just made sure they did our roads. First, they bid on those state jobs. They may get a few little roads. But see, now Mountain Enterprises gets big state contracts. And we even talked to them about, you know, there are some roads we need attention to early on our list and all that. But we kind of end up being a stepchild. But they do get the low bid and there's really nobody else doing it. I mean, nobody else bidding it for small towns like us. So it's kind of a change in how it's all evolved. But we're lucky to, we're lucky a couple reasons, to have the amount of money we're able to budget to do paving and then that we get as much done in one year as possible. But as the manager just touched on, we have money left from last year that just rolls over, which allows us to do more. We're always going to be a little bit behind the curve on having the time for the paving contractors to do all the work we need done. But carry on. Get as, you know, just stay on it and inspect, Kevin. Inspect, inspect, inspect. I remind you that all the time, no matter what it is, that the job is being done correctly. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose like sign. Item two.
New business? Item A.
I'm sorry. Yeah.
That's all right.
Item A. I was waiting for you to read all these chemicals.
I knew you were waiting for that.
Most wonderful day of the year.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled an ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a contract with Olic Chemical Solutions for the purchase of powdered activated carbon, the amount of $1.07 per pound for the Department of Utilities, Division of Water Production and Wastewater Treatment.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose like sign. Item B.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled an ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a contract with Brentag Mid-South East for the purchase of hydrofluosilic acid at a price of $2.19 per gallon, liquid chlorine at a price of $479 per ton, sodium hydrochloride at a price of 81.5 cents per gallon, and sulfur dioxide at a price of $640 per ton for the Department of Utilities, Division of Water Production and Wastewater Treatment.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Good job, counselor. Good job.
Yeah, I'm impressed.
There's more.
It gets worse.
Don't get too excited.
But counsel, you really need to relax doing this. I just feel this edge in your voice.
There is an edge.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item C.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled an ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a contract with Chemtrade Chemicals US LLC for the purchase of polyaluminum chloride at a unit price of $1.55 per gallon for the Department of Utilities, Division of Wastewater Treatment and Water Production.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item D.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled an ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a contract with Polydean Inc. for the purchase of liquid polymer for the wastewater treatment plant at a price of $12.99 per gallon, liquid polymer for the wastewater treatment plant at a price of $11.18 per gallon, and polymer catanonic at a price of $1.80 per pound for the Department of Utilities, Division of Wastewater Treatment and Water Production.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
It's not Polydean, it's Polydean, right?
Polydean.
I think. Okay. I might tell you, I might tell you that every attorney that I've worked with down here could not pronounce that second word. Because you want to say catatonic, but I don't know how you pronounce it.
Cat eye on it.
And I'm an English major, but I don't, I never had that on a spelling bee.
If you'd had it on a spelling bee, you probably wouldn't have been...
I probably would have missed it. Item C. Item E, I'm sorry.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled an ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a contract with Shannon Chemical Corporation for the purchase of liquid sodium permanganate.
There you go.
Permanganate.
You got it.
In the amount of $8.17 per gallon and potassium permanganate in the amount of $1.83 per pound for the Department of Utilities, Division of Wastewater Treatment and Water Production.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
F.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled an ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a contract with CI Thornburg Company, Inc. for the purchase of sand at a unit price of 14 cents per pound for the Department of Utilities, Division of Wastewater Treatment and Water Production.
So moved.
Like that one.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose like sign. Item G.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled an ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a contract with Univar USA, Inc. for the purchase of liquid caustic soda at a price of 78 cents per gallon for the Department of Utilities, Division of Wastewater Treatment and Water Production.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose like sign. Item H.
An ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a contract with USA LCO LLC for the purchase of aluminum sulfate at a price of 99 cents per gallon for the Department of Utilities, Division of Water Production and Wastewater Treatment.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Pose like sign. Item I.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled an ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a contract between the City of Ashland and Mountain Enterprises, Inc. for the placement and replacement of bituminous asphalt material for the 2020 street paving program in the amount of $851,250 for the City of Ashland Department of Public Works.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
J.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled an ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and approving change order number one between the City of Ashland, Kentucky and Granite Inleter LLC, increasing the contract about by no more than $25,000, adding 431.5 feet of 8-inch sewer lining on Holt Street for the Department of Utilities.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose like, okay.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled an ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a contract between the City of Ashland and Cosby Construction LLC for all labor and materials for miscellaneous concrete and asphalt repair work for up to one year in the amount of $469,595 for the Department of Engineering.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose like sign. Item L.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled an ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and approving change order number one between the City of Ashland, Kentucky and Frederick and May Construction Company, Inc., regarding their contract for the Pollard Mills Drainage Project, increasing the contract amount by $5,200 for the Department of Community and Economic Development.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any other new business?
We have some recommendations of the mayor for appointments to the Ashland Public Arts Council. The recommendations are Trish Hall, 4919 Robin Hood Drive, Ashland, Kentucky for a three-year term, beginning March 12, 2020 until March 12, 2023; Lisa Trumbor of 2830 South Belmont, Ashland, Kentucky for a three-year term, March 12, 2020 to March 12, 2023; Tim Quaid, 816 Ashland Avenue, Ashland, Kentucky for a two-year term from March 12, 2020 to March 12, 2022; Michael Spears of 4337 Garten Avenue for a two-year term, March 12, 2020 to March 12, 2022; and Mike Sexton, 1116 Highland Avenue for a one-year term from March 12, 2020 to March 12, 2021. And we would submit that for your approval.
Who would they be appointed?
Second.
Any discussion?
Thank you.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Before we adjourn, just a note to you and Tamika and people here. Our next, our next regular meeting is, was set for March 26. And due to some scheduling conflicts and travel, we're going to move it to the 24th, two days earlier. And it is an evening meeting. So we'll, we'll adjourn here today and our next regular meeting being Tuesday, March 24.
I'll make a motion that we change that meeting because we'll have to change it via ordinance.
Okay.
Well, that'll, it'll have to be a special or called meeting. And the mayor will, has the authority to call for the meeting. Then it'll be published and notified. The media will be notified in accordance with the rules and regulations regarding special meetings. The agenda will be put out and attached. And we'll only be allowed to address the matters on the agenda at that meeting. But we'll have everything on there.
Sure. Okay.
And that's, that has to go out 24 hours in advance, but we're trying to get it out to the Friday before the meeting and be on Tuesday.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose like sign. Nothing else? Thank you all for being here today and wash your hands. And if you touch the rails, try to walk down the steps. Or if you're in an elevator, don't touch the walls of the elevator, anything like that. Stay healthy, stay safe.